Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I'd like to call the City Council meeting for January 5th, 2021 to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Bringle, here. Duncan, here. Gesmi, here. Cronenberger, here. Lundell, here. Montgomery, here.
Hultoff, here. Okay, will we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into the meeting, we gotta all take our oath of office.
Yep, okay. Mr. Mayor, Laura has already taken her oath today. It was easier for me to run to her house and take it in person versus through Zoom. So, but Steve, Derek, and Matt, I'll need to take their oath here in person. If they would rise and raise your right hand and read your oath aloud.
Same time, or?
Same time, that'd be great.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office, a council member of the City of Cannon Falls, to which I have been elected, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Thank you. If you would sign away, and then I'll take your oath separate away.
Laura, we want to welcome you to the council.
Thank you very much. I wish I could have been there, but I'm fighting a cold, so I thought it best to stay home.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Bill, Duncan, a second by Gesmi, had approved the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, we'll get right into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December 31st, 2020. Item B, minute meetings for the December 15th, 2020 city council meeting. Item C, resolution 2529, establishing license fees and compensation. Item D, approve the 2021 appointments. Item E, resolution 2530, designating the depositories for the city funds for the fiscal year 2021. Item F, 2021 cost of living adjustment COLA for our non-union employees. Item G, statutory tort limits. Item H, resolution 2532, approving a street vacation and lot split at 915 North Sixth Street. Item I, resolution 2533, accepting a monetary donation from the Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association for $18,500 to the fire department. And item J, approve equipment purchases and trade for the fire department. Is there anything the council would like to pull down? Anything? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Bringle, a second by Duncan, approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, we'll get right into council business. Item A, election of a mayor pro tem. I would make a nomination of Steve Gesmi as mayor pro tem. Do I have a second? Matt? Motion by the mayor, a second by Montgomery, Steve Gesmi as mayor pro tem. Any discussion?
I abstain.
And can we make a second nomination?
Don't.
Well.
Just let it go.
Okay.
Let it go.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
I abstain.
One abstention, five yes. Okay, carried. Steve is our mayor pro tem. Okay, number two, designation of the official newspaper for 2021. Neil, you want that one?
Sure. The only thing I've got with this, this is typically on the consent agenda, but the Cannon Falls Beacon is in the process of completing the requirements for, to become the legal newspaper. I think back when they were transferring ownerships, it didn't get completed. And the only thing is, January 6th will be their second publication of their requirements, so after January 6th, they will be a legal newspaper. That's all I got. I just take a motion to accept them as a legal newspaper after January 6th.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Gesmi, a second by Duncan, approve the Cannon Falls Beacon as our official newspaper for 2021. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Carried. Okay, item C is professional service agreement for the Third Street Bridge Water Main, WHKS. Neil, you want to start with that one?
Yeah, Bill Angerman is here to discuss the Third Street Water Main crossing. The Public Works Commission took a look at it at their last meeting and made a recommendation that we look at doing the boring of the water main under the river instead of hanging it back on the Third Street Bridge. Bill is here to talk about that, but I believe his recommendation also is that it would be safety-wise and maybe even just the same price as hanging it back over there because of the costs. So he can take over, he's here to talk.
Thank you, Neil, Mayor and council. As Neil mentioned, what we looked at was, currently there's a six-inch water main on the bridge. That water main is an unknown age, but it's believed to be about the same vintage as the bridge. So, we figured at least 50 years old, probably 75 or more. A six-inch pipe, maybe a little background. So, the City of Cannon Falls has three water mains that cross the Cannon River. So there's two 12-inch mains, and then there's one six-inch, this pipe here on the bridge. A six-inch pipe is about one-quarter the capacity of a 12-inch pipe. So as Neil and I and the staff were talking about that, it's not really that great of a backup. So in essence, we're looking at what other options do we have? And what we had talked about is, well, let's increase the size of the pipe on the bridge, or are we comfortable with only two crossings of the river? So, and what we had talked about is, we did talk to the, you know, the bridge rehab engineer, hanging a larger-sized pipe on the bridge is not an option. So the next size up of pipe from a six-inch is an eight-inch pipe, and it's about double the weight. So basically, the bridge would have to be reinforced, and a bunch of changes would have to be made to the bridge to support it. So what we came down to is kind of our conclusion is, should we put a new pipe under the river? There is some risk to that because we're boring through rock, or do we get rid of the pipe on the bridge altogether? And after consulting with staff, and my opinion is, we think that having a backup to those two other crossings of the river was prudent to do, knowing that there is some risk involved. Part of the reason why we're optimistic we'll be able to drill under the river is, here within the last year or so, the gas company did bore same-size pipe underneath the river. Now, they told us they had some challenges with that, but ultimately, they were able to do it as well. And we have talked to that same contractor, and they're reasonably confident we should be able to get a water main under as well. So previously, you had authorized WHKS to do some preliminary work and do soil borings. But in our preliminary, we met with the contractors, and we actually, after consulting with Neil, we decided not to do the soil borings, that we would wait to see if the council decided to move forward. So that, the services, you've already authorized about $10,000 worth of work. We paused, we hit the pause button at about $2,500, so we didn't spend all that amount. And that's, we're gonna roll that over into this agreement if the council moves forward tonight. So again, working with Neil, we were trying to make sure we're making some prudent decisions. So ultimately, as Neil mentioned, recommendation is to move forward with directional drilling, that eight-inch water main underneath the river. So I'll pause, any questions or comments?
Bill, would you, if we bore under the river, would you do it fairly close to where the gas line was put under, or?
No, we would, so the, so do you know where the sanitary sewer and that little bridge, about 300 feet east of the, that's where this, that's where they went closer to that, we would go closer to the bridge. So we were thinking 20 feet, 30 feet, you know, plus or minus. One of the things that we'd have to do is, make sure we know where all the utilities are in that area. When I say utilities, you know, telephone, cable, electric, make sure we're gonna avoid that, but pretty close to the bridge.
Okay.
Let's hope, I think the gas company didn't run into a lot of rock, it was a lot of sand. Let's keep our fingers crossed, that's what happens here, I guess, too.
Well, that doesn't really matter, even if they did. I mean, they did soil, I remember when they did Third Street past the bank building, and they said, oh, we did a bunch of soil borings, and it's only gonna take us two weeks, and five months later, they were still there digging. So you just never know in Cannon Falls. It's, but hopefully, we need it, so.
Yeah, one of the interesting things, if I may, I'll just, so it's, so when you do boring, you either want to be all in rock or all out of rock.
Exactly.
The hardest part is when you're in both, when you kind of jump in and out. So, in this case, we're actually hoping we're gonna be in rock the whole way, because under the middle of the river, the depths we're looking at, we know it's rock.
Okay.
So again, there's, this is, this is, there's a little bit of art to this science or engineering as well, so.
Yeah.
I think we discussed at the, at the meeting, too, if we could guarantee that the other two crossings wouldn't ever fail, we wouldn't need this. But boy, you don't know.
Yeah.
You almost gotta have it, you almost gotta have it for the, for the guarantee that people are always gonna be served.
We'll cut off a lot of citizens if we don't have a backup and need it.
Yeah, it's really, I think it's really a prudent move.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Right. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Do we want a motion to approve, yeah, motion to approve the Third Street Bridge Water Main agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lundell, a second by Bringle, to approve the professional services for the Third Street Bridge Water Main. Any other discussion?
Well, should we, as part of that, say that it's gonna be bored under the river? Because we do have four options here, so.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that people understand, we're gonna.
Or we're just going with the recommendation that they made? Is that enough?
Yeah, and Bill was recommending going under the.
Yeah, I think.
Right, and that's, I just want everybody to understand, we're gonna do it under the river.
Under the river, okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, item B is approve the 49ers Union Contract, which is the Public Works. Neil?
The 49ers staff and council members, Morris Mattson and Bill Duncan, have been working on the new contract for '21 through '23. The 49ers or the Public Works Department came relatively with no changes in the, in the language of the contract. So what we had to negotiate with them was just a general wage increase. If you remember back, the LELS contract was a 1% in January and a 1% in July for the three years. The 49ers have agreed to that, and you'll find that in the contract. And that is the only, the only additions to the contract from the one prior to that.
Any questions? Okay, motion to approve the 49ers Union Contract.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Gesmi, to approve the 49ers Union Contract. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, item E is resolution 2531, providing for post-employment health care savings plan. And that's for the 49ers.
That's the same, same health care savings plan that the LELS had. They both expired along with their contracts. If you remember, at the last meeting, we approved the same resolution. It states what they can and can't do with their health care savings plan. So it just goes along with the contract, but it's just a resolution instead.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2531.
Second? Motion by Duncan, a second by Montgomery, to approve resolution 2531, providing for post-employment health care savings. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Carried. Okay, reports. Kyle, chamber?
Good evening, council and community. First, I would like to thank all of the residents, businesses, and services who put up beautiful holiday lights throughout Cannon Falls. They are wonderful to see. I do apologize if I've missed any part of the community. I tried to drive around everywhere to see where they were. And I would say that our map for Light Up Cannon Falls was the heaviest-hit Facebook post that we've had. And so there were plenty of people looking for it. So that is wonderful. Again, an announcement, Governor Walz will be speaking tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 PM. We are all hoping and have our fingers crossed that our restaurants and bars will be able to get opened. There may be something on the sports, but I haven't heard anything yet. And so please be aware, 2:00 PM tomorrow afternoon. With the year ending, the chamber actually had some accomplishments. And so we'd like to share those with you. We had a total of 185 members, which included 13 new members. And I'll let you know, as of today, I already know of two new members for 2021. So that's wonderful to hear. In 2021, we sold over $13,600 Chamber dollars. And that's the program that the Chamber dollar certificates have to be used in our chamber members, which we have some in Meesville, we have some in Dennison, New Trayer, but the majority are in Cannon Falls. And so those dollars are staying right here in our community. And so I thank everyone for using the Chamber dollar program. The flower baskets, last year, we raised $3,994 to have all of the hanging baskets and the planters filled. We've already received our first memorial for 2021. And so the gates are open, you can sure send your memorials or in honor of contributions in. This year, we did hold our first annual summer sizzling days and open air fair. It was a fun event, it was like a sidewalk fair. And we had such good comments from the participants as well as the vendors that we will be continuing that into 2021. We did partner with the City of Cannon Falls in promoting Cannon Falls to the region. And so we hope to continue that for the next year. We did continue our $500 scholarship to the Cannon Falls graduating senior, that is to a Cannon Falls graduating senior. And we also, a big thing at the end of the year was creating the Light Up Cannon Falls events. With Deck the Falls being canceled, we just needed to have something for the whole community. And I think we did a nice job of involving the whole community. And so that was a really good project to work on. And so our Facebook pages, we have over, we have almost 1,400 followers, which is incredible. That is just awesome for a chamber Facebook page. Our Instagram is 296. And so lots of things going on. I would like to say that people know Cannon Falls is here. And so I hope we see more of them all next year, or this year. It is this year now. Does anyone have any questions? It was a, it was a hard year, but it was a very good year. And so let's move on to a great year. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle. Okay, committees, Public Works, Steve?
I'm gonna give it to Neil, I didn't bring my notes.
We talked about four items. One of them is the Third Street Bridge Water Main that we just had the discussion with. We revisited the Grove Street Pond up on top of the hill. We talked about how we're gonna address that with the new development coming up. More to come on that one. That is a tough issue, that's gonna be hard to settle without the help of the neighboring property of, on top of the hill. And they said that they would, they would, when they get there, help us with the pond. So hopefully, that'll alleviate some of the water issues heading over the, over the cliff and down into the backyards of them residents. But that, it is gonna take some time. We also talked about a water service on Mill Street, whether the city had any liability for the repairs of it. As you recall, our liability starts at the main, and the water services are our customers' liability. We also talked about a street light on North Gate Circle. Their recommendation was, Public Works Commission recommendation was to not address another street light on the cul-de-sac, there's one in the cul-de-sac already, so. And that is all we talked about, them four items.
Okay, park board, Matt?
Yeah, the park board, our main two issues were the swimming pool. Neil gave us an update on that. Obviously, it's winter, so no work is being done, but the crew did get a lot of work done before the snow fell. The cement work has been patched, we're just waiting for spring and repaint. And no official decision has been made, but we are planning on having the pool open this summer. We'll see what capacity that is with how the state numbers are and, or the local numbers are on COVID. But at this point, we're planning to open and have as regular a summer as we can, so that's good news with the pool. And it'll be in great shape, it'll feel like a brand-new pool again, so we're excited about that. The other thing we did with the park board was, we had a really good presentation regarding John Birch Park. It was mostly put together by the Bears, and they did a great job. They've got some renderings, they've got their, they have their traffic light, they're red, they're yellow, they're green, of what they need moving forward and what needs to be addressed quickly, and what is the plan for years down the road. They've got some great plans, and it's not just a wish list of them saying, we want something new, we want to do this. They have some reasoning behind it, and one of those big reasons is to host state tournaments, Legion level and higher amateur baseball, Cannon Falls, I forget which year they did host. It's been a long time, and they.
Eight or eight and nine, I think.
They would like to get, they would like to do that again. But to do that, they'd need a little bit of update on the facilities, just to name a few. The first base dugout, the rock wall behind there is pushing and pressing in against that. So that needs to be figured out of what we're gonna do with that limestone wall and with the top, the deck up there, with the seating, with the cement work. Also, the dugout, the third base dugout, the cinder block is starting to erode in the back corner. And in their renderings, they've got some amazing plans of extending the bleachers from behind home plate down that third baseline, reconstructing the dugout and having something above it, possibly another concession stand or a media stand, but it looks really nice. And I know that, you know, small-town ballparks are kind of iconic for the town. And Keith Myers had shared with us that John Birch Park is usually a top-15 park in the entire state. So anything we can do to not only keep up with the times, but not be so far out in front, but to not let something deteriorate, and I think right now. And I think right now, we really, the word deteriorate is what I would use with the pictures that they have of the, the wall and of the dugouts. So a great presentation from them. And we did invite them, are they going to ever present to the council at this point? Or are we going to, okay. So you guys will get a chance to see this also.
If I can chime in just a little bit. I did talk to Bill Angerman about the wall, and, and they're going to take a look at that and bring us a, a proposal to find out what this stuff will cost. And so we can actually start working on grants or, or looking for means of, of money.
Right.
So it, it's, that wall, if you look at it, it's really long and it's tall, and it's going to cost a lot of money, so.
It's been there a long time.
Yeah. I thought we should probably get a, a cost estimate on it, so we can at least go seeking for some funds.
Yeah, it was, it was, I was at the meeting, it was a great presentation. And I'd like to see him come to the council and share it with all of you, because it was, it was good. Like I say, the wall's a big thing, and those cement seats up there are kind of leaning down now. They're, they're falling apart, too. So there's some serious work that's got to be done there, too.
It's a great ballpark.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Joint Powers Board, anything there?
No, no.
Okay, let's go around the horn, anything, Jeff, you got anything, guy? Neil?
Oh. Do you want to discuss, or, I'm sorry, Neil. Do you want to discuss our meeting?
I was going to leave that to one of you guys to talk about, but I can if you want me to.
I would assume, I would just assume you do it, yeah.
So the Police Commission met. As you know, we're in the process of filling the position created by an officer's resignation. We anticipated a couple of possible other openings that could occur. And so the Police Commission decided to post for applications, so that has been done. We're accepting applications through the 15th. And then we'll be getting back together to determine if we're going to move forward, because we have more information on if an opening is going to occur or not. Or if the, it won't occur, then we'll just notify the people that applied, that, you know, at this point, we're not moving forward with interviews. So there'll be more information to that as we learn information.
You want to mention that we've, we're, we've, you posted internally first and one, one.
That's, that's on the resignation one. So we're moving forward with the, the internal reserve candidate for that position.
Yep.
The potential future openings, we are posting next time.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, Neil?
Just one item. The Public Works staff is going to be working diligently on doing the ice rink, getting ice made. If we get some colder weather, which sounds like we're going to have here in the next week or so, we should be able to get a rink made quite quickly. That's all I got.
Okay. Let's go around the horn. Derek, anything?
Nope.
Mary Jo?
No.
Matt?
One quick thing. I received a complaint about the trail. And the trail is wonderful this time of year for people who enjoy cross-country skiing. However, the complaint has been there's footprints. For people who don't know cross-country skiing, there's tracks. You don't, you know, you stay in the track. Somebody has been intentionally destroying the tracks and putting boot, boot marks and walking in it. And it's not somebody walking their dog. There's no, there's no hoof prints, or there's no paw prints, there's no animals. It's, it's a person. And there's also human waste that's been seen on the track. So just, you know, we want to enjoy the trail. And whoever's out there, or whatever the situation may be, let the people ski, enjoy the trail, get out there, enjoy winter, and don't try to ruin it for somebody else. So it's just, it's, it's frustrating to hear that that's happening on the trail.
Bill?
I just want to welcome Laura aboard, so look forward to working with you.
Steve?
Same thing Bill said, welcome Laura. Hopefully, you can come in someday, and we'll look forward to working with you. That's all I have.
Yeah, I'll say the same thing. Welcome, Laura. We'll, we'll, I want to see you in person here next time, that was that.
Yeah, I definitely wanted to be there. I apologize that it didn't work out. I thought it would be best not to contaminate others. But thank you in advance, everybody, for your patience, as I learn. And I'm sure I'll be reaching out and asking questions, and I'm really happy to be here. So thank you for the welcome.
Thank you. Just to, I'll go just briefly, some meetings coming up. EDA meeting is Wednesday, the 13th. Planning Commission, Monday, the 11th. Library Board is on Monday, the 11th, that's remote. And the Power, Joint Powers Board is Tuesday, the 26th of January. Just to keep, let you know what's coming up.
Excuse me, John, Nicole probably wants to.
Oh, Nicole, go ahead.
Hi. All right, so I just wanted to let all of you know, there's this nice glare coming from my glasses, so you can't really see my eyes, sorry about that. But I wanted to let you know everything that's going on at the library. We've got some fun new things coming up. Um, there is, for children's programming, we're doing a virtual program of a seek-and-find on Facebook, that's going to be this Thursday. And there is a teen book club starting up on Friday at 2:00, meeting virtually through Zoom. Matthew's been working really hard with the teens and getting them really involved, and they've been coming up with some good ideas, and this is something they requested. The following week, we have Public Theater Storytime that Alexa will be doing on our Facebook page. We are doing Make It Monday Recycle Art. So Angie is teach, is doing that. If you want to do that particular craft, you can pick up, we'll call the library, and then reserve your kit. And then Angie's going to record it and then post it on our YouTube channel, so then people can do it at home. So it's very, very cool. She's made some pictures of it to post online and posters, but then we also have a sample at the library, and it's really, really pretty. I really like it. And it's also not super difficult to do, so anybody can do it. We have, every other Wednesday, we have for children ages seven to 12, a STEM take-home experiments. So kids can take home STEM kits that, from the front, that will be available at our front door, and then try them out at home with adult supervision and have some fun doing science. And we will be closed on MLK Day, the 19th. And then we also have a new anti-racism series that we're going to be starting on the 19th. That is actually really a cool program that was created with, it was through Dencho, which is Japanese-Americans preserving information about the Japanese internments during World War II. But then they also made it in conjunction with Holocaust survivors and, I believe, the NAACP. So a number of different minority groups. So this is a free program that is available for anybody who wants to participate, if you want to learn more about anti-racism. And Matthew will be facilitating it, and it's going to be online. And then currently, we are still doing curbside service. I'm waiting to find out what Walz has to say and what the COVID numbers are for the rest of the week. And then it might change next week. I don't know for sure yet, because we want to find out everything that's going on. And that's everything I've got.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay. The next item is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda.
Brenda Voschalek, 408 Oak Street North. And I know I'll hold dubious honor, I believe, of being the longest working employee for the city of Cannon Falls, at 40 years. And I want to thank you, first of all, for the recognition I received from the city recently of some Chamber dollars and a certificate. Although the certificate recognizes me for 40 years of city council service. And I don't know that, that anyone would ever survive 40 years on the city council. But in receiving that, it also got me to consider the fact that in working those 40 years, that you don't see that in people serving the city any longer. And you ask the question, why? And for me, it wasn't a matter of what I got from the city. It was the job I was doing. And it didn't matter how you treated me. It was what I wanted to do. So whether you valued me in any manner or not, or how you treated me, and in some cases, I was treated pretty poorly. You couldn't make me leave because it was the job I wanted to do, and it was the people I cared about. And so it bothers me when I see people like Bonnie German leave the city without so much as a thank you after 38 years of service. Now, you may not like a person as an individual, but after 38 years of dedicated service to the citizens of the community, at the very least, a person deserves a thank you. And the same holds true for a year ago, when Linnell Undress left. That lady got a paper certificate. And granted, she got a little bit of a going-away party. But to me, a lady who had served the city for that many years had stepped in on more than one occasion as your city administrator when the time was necessary and got so little thanks for it. I think too often, we forget to look at the value people are giving us and forget to extend them the common courtesy of thanks for a job well done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brenda. Anybody else, public input? Public input? Third and final call, public input. If not, we'll close the public input part of the meeting, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Duncan, second by Bringle, to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.